I think the plan was to reach out to them and say, just to offer some options.
Boys, you ready? Call the meeting back over. Thank you. All right. Excuse me. This is good. Um, whoa, 221.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have John Sanchez here for an appointment within the Water and Sewer Division. John?
You didn't kick. I was hoping I didn't have to.
Tonight, okay, I have it right here. So with the retirement of Chuck Woods, we actually came here a couple of weeks ago, and Matt Davis was promoted to that position. That position opened up, and so we're here for the next position that opened, which is working foreman in Water and Sewer. So Paul Barin and I, Paul Barin's here in the back superintendent of Water and Sewer, interviewed three internal candidates for this job. After reviewing all the qualifications and requirements of the job, I'm recommending Aaron Chase for that position. Aaron has been with us for six years in the Water and Sewer Division. Prior to that, he actually worked in the Air Water Department doing similar work to what we do here with the water mains. So he has all the experience that he has collected, both in Air and in the town of Burlington. He has a D2 license and also a CDLB, a Hoisting 1B and 2A license. So I'm recommending him for that position.
And with John's recommendation, I hereby appoint Aaron Chase to the position of Water and Sewer Working Foreman in the Burlington Public Works Department, and requested the Board of Selectmen waive the standard 15-day waiting period.
Second.
Okay. Moved in second, and all those, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Again, abstain. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Congratulations. We've completed yet another important step within our goal to become a Massachusetts Green Community, which is the completion of an energy reduction plan for the town. This satisfies criteria on number three of the program. The report details the ways in which we are going to try to reduce the town's energy use by 20% over the next five years. We consider this plan to be a living document that will continue to be updated over time, and our team will be meeting on it annually to review the results and make appropriate changes. With your vote this evening, you are committing to reduce the town's energy use by 20% over the next five years. I'd like to make it clear to the board that there are no negative ramifications for the town if we're unable to accomplish this goal, but obviously, we're very hopeful that this plan that was put together will help us lead to that 20% reduction in five years. At this time, I'd really like to thank the following people for their efforts on this report. John Sanchez, Frank Anderson, Tommy Lee from the Public Works Department, Bob Kuna from the School Department, Neil Duffy from the Commonwealth of Mass Green Communities Program, and most importantly, Rachel Kaplan of the Public Works Department, who's here tonight with John. She's been our lead person on the Green Communities effort. She's put in a ton of work. I'd like to thank, also thank, the board members for your support. You've supported us on every step of the way on entering into the Green Communities Program. We're almost there. It's been almost a year-long process for us, and I feel like we're right around the corner from gaining entrance into the program, so I wanted to thank you guys. And John and Rachel are here to answer any questions you have about the report.
So if we may, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Absolutely, sir. Go right ahead. God forbid, yes, go right ahead. King.
Nothing. My apologies, Mr. Chairman. I'll wait until you.
The last person you're going to apologize to. Go ahead, do your thing.
So Rachel here put the plan together as well as working throughout, and we wanted to outline the effort that it took to get to where we are today, and very briefly, so if I may have her go through it.
Yes. Rachel. Go ahead.
So there's five criteria. Criteria one was passing zoning in designated locations for as-of-right siting for potential research and development manufacturing facilities, and the planning department helped us out with that. We got a map from them, and they just spotted out the areas that we could potentially put certain facilities in. Criteria two was an expedited application of permitting, and so Lisa Mead, our town council, was able to provide a letter, and that's all we needed for number two, so we're good on that. Number three, which is why we're all here today to vote on, is that energy reduction plan. I worked very closely with MAPC. We had grant money, so we had a lot of help with the state creating this plan, which was a big relief for me, so I didn't have to do this from scratch. And we also worked really closely with Bob Kuna, who's a big help, and we have a school committee tomorrow as our final vote. Criteria four was adopting the fuel-efficient vehicle policy, which you guys all signed off on in the summer. I went to a vote in Board Select meeting and School Committee. Everybody signed off on that, and that was Tommy Lee and myself, you know, put together all the vehicles, identified which ones could potentially become electric or hybrids, and which vehicles we will not be replacing, like a fire truck, for example. And criteria five was adopting the stretch code, which was passed in May Town Meeting this year.
Thank you very much. That's all we have. Is there any more?
John, what's the actual vote? Do you need just to approve the report?
Yes, what we asked you to tonight, as well as the School Department, which we're going to visit tomorrow night, is to vote on the reduction plan, to approve the reduction plan that you have in front of you.
Okay, so we need, we're all set. We got any questions, gentlemen?
Can I ask just one question?
Just one?
Just the one. I promise this time.
Oh, really?
No, usually, they spin a controller like three questions.
When it says one, it goes into like seven.
I know. This'll just be one question. No follow-ups, I promise. Given the state, because reading through the report and understanding that, like, some of the buildings that are using the most energy being the high school, the middle school, Francis Wyman, and the Mill Palm Reservoir. Given the amount of students and the energy that we currently use in the state of the buildings, do we feel that we can absolutely get, like, is 20% attainable in the next five years, or are we just going to aim for it and just hope to get as close as we can? In all reality.
So if I may, I'll answer that one, because we actually worked a lot with MAPC last week on that issue, because we take it very seriously, we'll be able to attain the goals that we have, and we have some issues on some of the items that were originally, were going to be part of the plan. We wanted to have items in the plan that will be attainable, so everything we have here will be attainable. And number two is, we wouldn't work on a building in which we're not going to get our money back prior to the building being rehab. So an example of that is the Police Department. We did the lighting this year, and you're thinking, well, the building is pretty old, it's not going to last. Well, those lights are going to get, we're going to get our money back way before the building gets to be replaced.
Awesome. It's great they were aiming for the 20%, I think that's, it's awesome. I thank you both and everybody else who worked on the reports, a lot of work that went into it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead. No, go ahead, Michael. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not a question, more of a comment than a question. As I read through the back of my tear over the weekend, and then I had an opportunity to be at a meeting earlier today with Mr. Sanchez, and I had to ask him, who put together this report? It's an incredible amount of data, and it is incredibly well put together. And Rachel, he was quick to point out that you indeed worked very, very hard on this, and I know you've done some wonderful work for us on previous adventures in town here and other areas, and I just want to say, it's certainly been a welcome addition to the staff, and thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Wait till the next one, Mike. She's not going away. She'll be at the next article.
I know. She's incredible.
Paul, you want to go first, or Jimmy?
Yeah. Do you have something?
Nope.
The part about the expedited permitting, have you talked to all the parties involved, and are they on board as to what we're doing? And do they know that Rachel's going to be the enforcer, and they need to step in line?
So obviously, I mean, this was not done in a vacuum. We met with planning, conservation, we had actual meetings, all the stuff. I want to say, ailing the spring, probably, when we went through it, and also with the MAPC, just to make sure that what we currently have in place is considered expedited, and it is. So they are aware of what we need to do.
Because I've seen what we can do when we expedite permits in town, when we all work together on something important. It really works very well, so hopefully, this will follow suit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rachel, I just want to echo what everybody said. Thank you for your passionate work on this, and the detail is incredible. One of the criteria, obviously, is the 20% reduction, and even before we started looking at the Green Communities, we were already doing a lot of these things. Can you just briefly explain how the look-back period worked, and where we, how that affected us getting closer and closer to this designation? Or, John, I don't know if that's more appropriate for you.
The projects will already complete it, that will be part of this.
So, so one big project we did in 2017 was replacing all the LED, the streetlights with LEDs, so we're hoping that we can capture that, because we've gone down, I think, to a quarter of the energy that we used to use just by streetlights alone, and there are still external lights that we haven't replaced, like lining the high school street. I think Bob Kuna mentioned that there's opportunity on the outside of all the schools to do that. So that was a big one, and, you know, we've been working with Neil to establish our baseline. Currently, we're going to just FY '19, but there's still some data tweaking, so if we go back to '18, we're already one step closer to that 20% by capturing the streetlight replacement.
And most recently, and only, I mean, we're not the only ones working on reducing energy. The School Department is doing the same, and the School Department went through a full retrofit this year of lighting, I believe, all the schools?
All the schools, yes.
What retrofit is, so that effort will counter with achieving this goal, and the Police Department being as new as we have, that will counter with achieving the goal as well. Unfortunately, some of the older projects that we've done, and we've done a lot of energy projects, they're all for them to actually account him as part of reaching our goal. The good news is that every one of those projects we've done in the past has saved us money. So even though we're not really necessarily helping us to reach this goal, it has helped us save some money within the town.
Can I tell them about the news I got today?
You can mention that.
So Eversource has a current incentive that Bob Kuna found out about through a local electric company with Eversource, that in all the schools where they did the retrofitting, they're going to extend that to the town side. So next week, we're going to have somebody come and do audits, and they're going to replace all the fixtures and LED lights free of charge.
Ooh, pretty good. Wow.
Thank you, Bob Kuna.
Okay. Well, I don't even need to say anything. Everybody's said everything at all, so I don't like, I'll wait till the next article. So, want to vote on this?
Great.
Okay, gentlemen, I've seen there are no more questions, so I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We accept the energy reduction plan that's submitted this evening.
Jim, second by?
Second.
Nick? All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, abstain? Five zero zero, Betty.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
Yep. Next up, Mr. Chairman, we have John Sanchez here with Rachel, requesting the board approve a policy for the electric vehicle charging station behind the Town Hall. I know that maybe Joe and Jim have already worked through some of the details with John and Rachel, so the policy was in your back up here, and we're looking for feedback and hopefully a vote. Unable to consider a vote tonight, we'll bring it back to a future meeting, so any thoughts or comments for John and Rachel on this policy?
So, before I send off the questions, I'm going to actually let Jimmy go first, because we sat in on a meeting that Rachel obtained all the wording for this. John was there. We went back and forth with a few items, back and forth, but I'm going to let Jimmy go over that, and then I have a few things to say after that. So, go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, we sat down with John and Rachel, and again, Rachel did another superb job with this as well, doing all the research and finding out other previous policies. What's important is that we're in the infancy of EV vehicles in Burlington, so we're just starting the process. So there's a lot to learn and gain as we grow. It looks like the future is going to be electronic vehicles, you know, down the road. So we went back and forth. We tried to, and being as a policy, this, it does, you know, be voted on tonight, or may not be voted on tonight, but either way, it's something we can change as the time changes. So this is our starting point with regards to a policy, and as we get more and more, you know, this may be the right, this may be, you know, every item may be perfect, may not be, but we'll tweak it as needed. But again, Rachel, you did a great job putting it together. We debated back and forth on the policy, the guidelines, and the liabilities, and I think we actually came up with a pretty good starting point, so I'll just leave it there.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mike?
No, sir.
Just one technicality question, if I may. Thank you. Under the limitation of liability, it says, "The town is not responsible if another EV user removes a charging port from one car and places another." Just for liability's sake, does it make sense to say, like, if anybody removes a charging port from somebody's car, that we aren't going to be liable for any damage to the vehicle? Does that matter? And I'm asking, I really don't know.
I'm going to go, Rachel?
I mean, we met with Town Council last week, and she didn't hold us up on that issue. What do you think?
Yeah, we went over every point with her, and then, you know, there was, I mean, she did have some issues with some of the other languages that she changed.
Sure.
But that was one of the issues that there was, there was nothing on it.
All right. It's caught my attention.
Paul, sir.
Thank you.
So I didn't say anything last time, and I'll say it this time. Rachel, I can't thank you enough for all the work you've done on this article and every other article that's come across us. John, you did a fantastic job with the hiring of her.
And she's a Burlington girl.
And she's a Burlington girl, and her father's a great guy, and her mother and her brother are really great, but honestly, every time you come in front of us, it impresses me more and more with the stuff that you've done for this town. So I just want to say thank you for myself and probably for the board at this point for everything you've done. And John, once again, how do I say thank you for the people you hire? A lot goes into that. It really does. It's not, this town is in great shape. I mean, if you look at the people that sit in your office, that sit upstairs in your room, that you have, there's some great people up there that really, really take this town to heart, you know, along with Mr. Brian Curtin in the back there, and his office is the same way. So I can't say it enough. Mr. Petron's not here, so I'll save for him, right? It's a great town. You know, we have, watch, you ready? Paul? Our administrator's a lot better now than before. John, that was for you.
He's watching us.
No, not at all. But he'll get wind of it, I know he will. So anyway, let's go to a vote. I have a motion on this.
No, you want to get, Nick?
All right. I'll make the motion that we approve the charging policy for the town of Burlington.
A second.
Motion, a second, and any, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Stain, five zero zero, Betty.
Can I just ask, John, when do you, I know it's under construction, do you just get a timetable on when they'll actually be ready for use?
Before Thanksgiving.
Super. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I know you already voted a policy, but just, because there's been a lot of interest about what we're going to charge, so just.
Oh, really? How'd you bring that up, right? Really? How'd you bring that one up?
No, just in the basics of it. Town meeting, a lot of people approached me, like, I hope it's not going to be free, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, so pretty much the policy tries to recover the cost of electricity.
Maybe the fine is staying over more than, what was it, a day there? Maybe that little fine should be increased. Same.
That's it.
The starting point.
Thank you.
The starting point.
Thank you.
We're all set, right?
Yep, these guys got another one.
They got one more?
Sorry.
Oh, the sign board. That's right, too.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over time, we're interested in reviewing, updating all the existing board policies, and if necessary, creating new policies where appropriate. To that end, Mr. Sanchez is proposing a new policy here for the use of the DPW electronic sign board. We consider this a first reading of the policy, so John is here to hear your suggestions and tell you about, a little bit about the policy he's proposing. This is the first time the board would have been exposed to this, so we don't, we're not looking for a vote here tonight. We can bring it back to a future meeting. We're looking to get some feedback from you in terms of what policy's been developed to date, so that they can make some improvements and bring it back to you, so.
Great. So we'll start with, what?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, when I saw this, I kind of cringed a little bit, honestly. You're talking about the orange portable sign that we see on the lawn at Simons Park from time to time. I've had previous discussions with Rec reation regarding the corner in the town common, where you currently see banners sort of strung up on some poles that are in need of maintenance and so on and so forth, and we had the discussion of perhaps an electronic type of a board placed over there. Building inspector says, no, we can't do that. We have to go to town meeting and get a zoning change, whatever. There's some, there's some steps to, to put an electronic board in the, in town, like on Simons Park. So I'm wondering, I'm sure you have other uses for that traffic one that we're currently using as a billboard or an information sign, and maybe should we be looking at more of a more permanent type of a structure, and should we maybe take those necessary steps to do it properly?
Well, I'm sure Public Works would be thrilled if you told them you didn't want the electronic billboard used for any sort of signage other than public works signage. That would make them very happy, I'm sure, so.
I mean, we've got road closures and other things where it's needed.
This is, the policy suggested, because they have, they received quite a bit of requests to use it, and trying to determine what's an appropriate use of the sign.
It's actually more visible than the one that Rec uses for their banners, at least in my opinion, anyway.
So we're here, we're here to hear your suggestions on this and your thoughts on the policy, so feel free to let them know what you think, and we'll.
I just did. You could keep yours, and we will go shop around, and we'll go through the necessary motions to get a permanent sign up there, because it was, people do like to receive that information, and it is informative and it's timely, and it, I think it's a good location somewhere in that neighborhood, that area of town, to, and important for us to, when we do have important information, to share it with the public. So I'd like to pursue a little bit further, but kind of a crusty old orange sign, no offense, but rather see something more permanent.
He does that on purpose, crusty old orange sign, so we don't want it out there.
Those are my, those are my thoughts on this. The policy itself, I mean, the, what I see in front of me is perfectly fine, but looking for alternatives to your traffic warning sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm done. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Slavomir Reunion. I think that this policy is just, and this is no offense, please, don't take it as such, this policy is only stating the unfortunate requests that come in that are becoming bothersome to your department. And I'll say that, you don't have to say that, I'll say that, right? Is that people, we started doing it for a couple of big things, and then it just took off, right? And now every department wants to advertise, and I get it, right? It's a nice colorful sign, people see it, and they're trying to get their message out there, which I completely understand. But by adopting this policy, all we're doing is allowing departments to continue to bother your department with having that sign up there, that digital sign. I would rather we, as a board, look for a permanent alternative, work with you and Rec and whoever else we need to, to find a way that we can, you know, have a constant stream of town of Burlington messaging going while you keep your sign. So there's nothing wrong with it. I thought it read perfect, I thought it was fine. I'm just more opposed to the, you know, the Band-Aid of the problem versus, like, actually fixing the problem. Thank you.
Paul?
I agree with both those gentlemen. We've long had the conversation about having something more permanent over there, and it's important that maybe we just start the conversation and push it further down the road. But as far as this is concerned, as I read it, I think it covers all the bases that we need for the sign as it exists now, and we'll come up with others when we get our new sign on the corner.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, town events only, just one quick question. It's not the way I feel, but I know we have, say, it can be used for, it should be used for town elections, but then it says we can't use it for political events. Could someone misconstrue or consider that ambiguous as far as an election being a political event, or can we just clean that wording up a little?
It's a civic event. We'll call it a civic event, not a political event.
Okay.
But we could actually describe the uses and include elections as one of the allowable uses.
Well, it says it is, but I just think, didn't think that, it says you can't use it for, you can use it for elections, but you can't use it for political events, and some people may consider an election a political event, so it's just kind of contradictory a little. I don't know if there's alternate wording that we can look at, just so that it doesn't... We can look at some wording to clarify that. Yep.
And we also have the caveat in there that the town administrator has final say on anything, so if there's a misconstruction of anything.
Well, you know, the administration, as they always try to advise the board, is the tricky thing with these things is setting the precedent, and, you know, what you allow someone to use the electronic billboard is pretty much opened up to any entity, whether, no matter how distasteful it may be to us or to the residents, once we open that door. That's always our biggest concern from the administration's standpoint, is setting the precedent that we could end up with, required to post signs for some event or organization which, you know, would be very distasteful to us and to other residents, so.
What's that? Betty, before I go.
But you said, may I?
Betty, Betty.
Yes. When you say town events, do you mean town of Burlington municipal events, or do you mean party events?
Sponsored by a town department, I would say.
Sponsored by a town department.
A town event would be something that's running affiliation with a town department.
So at present, I'm drawing it, our corner sign is only for town-sponsored events.
Mr. Chairman?
So you know.
That was all.
Town-sponsored events, is it border health?
The request, there has to be a town agency or town board or a town department.
What I'd like to do at this point is, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to, and I would definitely get on this, because I'm part of the Subcommittee of the Rec Department, put something together, a small little committee. One other guy want to go with me this, will look at, will look at what you've written down, whatever else, any emails can come directly to me on this, or whoever wants to jump on this with me, or nobody, doesn't really matter. And then I want to get into the fact of what Michael said about putting something on the common eventually, so we can get in touch with Brendan Egan, and maybe we can, three of us can meet, and I'll meet you afterwards, and we'll discuss what we want on there, what can go on, what can't go on, and we'll come up, and maybe within two meetings from now, we'll come in with a game plan of what we, what we really are looking for, and maybe by springtime, we can get something on the common, maybe put a more article in for January, and whatever the money costs to do that. That's my thought right now. If anybody has anything that would like to add to that, or not, that would be great. Mr. Sanchez?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Town Council, when we met with her last week, she had a suggestion about, like, since we're done with policies, that's not getting voted tonight, more generic way to actually address any and all sinus banners and anything a little that anybody may place on town property, and that was a suggestion she had to us as well. So maybe as the board looks in the future, maybe they want to look at that as well.
Well, I think we have to be very careful what we're doing, because Mr. Sagrino had, you know, some of the untasteful things that we have in the world today. We don't want them on that, on that sign, but on the other hand, if we allow Joe Marini's golf tournament to be up there, why can't I have this up there or why can't I have that up there, you know what I mean? So we have to be very careful on how we word this and what we put out there to the general public, because there could be some nasty thing that could go on there and there wouldn't be a damn thing we could do about it as a town, you know what I mean? Unless we just shut the power off and took it off the common, I mean? So that's something I really like to sit down with, with you guys and figure all this out and move on and hopefully get a really nice sign on that comment, that would be nice. Everyone okay with that?
I have a question, Mr. K, Paul said this was just the first reading, on here it says approve, we're not really looking to approve it tonight, are we?
No.
No, okay. That's all, thank you.
Okay.
She didn't write this one.
It shows.
But she was saying the meaning.
It shows.
She was saying the meaning.
It's with this one.
It's not my fault.
With that comment, you will be writing the next one.
So, so similar to, to the one that we did, actually to give credit to people did, Terry Keen actually contacted a lot of communities to see what they had for policies as well, and this is how this one was, gathered some data from communities around us and this is how this one's created as well.
Somewhere in our archives, we have a policy for, regarding, specific to the town.
So I'd like to meet, you and I will talk, and Terry will talk, we've already got a policy.
Maybe we could blend the two together to come up with something good.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody, thank you, Rachel. Okay. Paul?
Next up, Mr. Chairman, we have a liquor licensing issue, Buffalo Wild Wings here. We're going to need someone to read the, read the notice into the record.
So who want to read Buffalo Wild Wings? Can you do it? Thank you, boys.
The Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 28th, 2019, at or after 6:30 PM at the Town Hall, 29 Center Street, Burlington, Mass, second floor, main meeting room for BW Burlington LLC, doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings, to consider approval of an application at this full-service restaurant with an all alcohol liquor license requesting change of ownership interest as allowed per Alcohol Liquor General Law, Chapter 138 of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Property is located at 15 South Avenue, Burlington, Mass.
Thank you. Right ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Slakmen. My name is Pat Lennox, I'm one of the owners of the Buffalo Wild Wings here in Burlington. Before I forget about it though, I know you talked about how wonderful Rachel was and with respect to having great employees, I want to mention how wonderful it's been to work with Betty. We have four other restaurants in greater Boston area and we're part of a team that has 42 Buffalo Wild Wings, so we work with a lot of municipalities and it's been such a great joy to just work with Betty, she's always very courteous and always responding quickly and whatnot, so with respect to having good employees, you have another one there.
Thank you very much, thank you.
As we know, we submitted an application for a change in ownership, which you have before you. I apologize for how volumous, voluminous it is, I will blame that on the attorneys that we're working with, but what I want to do is just kind of go through it very briefly so that you kind of understand in simplest terms what we're trying to do. This is really not a change of ownership per se, we are going through a corporate restructuring at the direction of our tax attorneys and tax accountants. We're doing this to set up for tax purposes in terms of being able to expense certain items across our stores as opposed to having to amortize them. So the ownership today will be the exact same ownership once this is approved, it's the same group of people, again, it's just for, for tax purposes. We, we are keeping the exact same, nothing will change with respect to our day-to-day operations, and additionally, we have four other stores, like I mentioned, in the greater Boston area that we are doing this exact same thing for. We've already been in front of those four local towns and had the same approval, those have been submitted to the ABCC and have already been approved by the ABCC as well. So I'd be glad to answer any other questions, but that's kind of it in a nutshell.
We'll start with Jimmy, we'll start with you this time.
I have no, nothing at this time.
I'm going to ask the question, but I'm guessing I already know the answer. Betty, you have all the paperwork and you're comfortable with what had to be submitted to you?
Yes, the state is very specific, they give you a list of what you have, and he and I, we went through everything and everything is here.
Very good, thank you.
Mike?
Not, not really, I mean, other than, I appreciate you taking a moment to explain the, the application to us, we do receive a fair number of these during the course of the year and, and actually takes quite a bit of time of our staff for all of the alcohol license requests and changes and that we get over the course of a year, so, but anyhow, I reviewed it over the weekend, I have no, I have no concerns.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
We're all set. Okay, so at this point, we need to be a vote, right?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve Buffalo Wild, Buffalo Wild Wings at 15 South Avenue, the change of ownership interest.
Yes, need to close the public hearing. Mr. Chairman, any comments from the public?
Oh, comment, I'm sorry, I always forget the public.
I did too.
That's because he's back there, anyway. Like opening up the public? Anybody saying there's none, can someone make a motion to close the public?
Chairman, I'll make that motion, I made previously, that we approve Buffalo Wild Wings 15 South Avenue for the change of ownership interest.
Yes, close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
It's not, is it a public hearing?
Yes, yes. It just doesn't say it on your agenda, so. Okay, motion made, seconded, public hearing is closed. Jimmy, you already made your motion.
Yes.
All right, so do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second on that motion, so motion made, it's seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Stained against, five zero zero, Betty.
Yes.
You're all set, thank you. Sorry to be confused.
No problem.
You own the Route One in Saguas facility? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll come on.
Two twenty-six.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, we have a public hearing for requests from Coles to do temporary 24-hour license.
Thank you.
If you can get somebody to read that.
Michael's going to read that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 28th, 2019, at Honor after 6:40 PM at the Town Hall, 29 Center Street, Burlington, Massachusetts, second floor, main hearing room for the application of Coles Department Stores Burlington for a retail establishment temporary 24-hour license for the Coles store located, located at 150 Lexington Street, Burlington, Mass. Hearing is being held in accordance with Burlington's General Bylaw Article 13, Section 1.41, to allow for special temporary license in order to allow Coles to operate from 7:00 AM until 1:00 AM on Saturday, December 7th, 2019, and from Friday, December 13th, 2019 through December 19th, 2019, with a 1:00 AM, with, with 1:00 AM following, on the following day in each instance, in for a period of 24 hours, starting Saturday, December 21st, 2019, at 12:00 AM through Tuesday, December 24th, 2019, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, that was not easy, but.
We'll start with, anything? Another article comes up every year, they come up on this with us?
Yep.
It hasn't changed, it's been...
It's been six years, my name is Serena Beers, I'm the district manager for the Boston Metro Market, and yeah, we've come through this process for six years.
I have to tell you, before we get going, I was corrected earlier because I'm like, I asked Betty, well, they don't have Thanksgiving on here, and Betty said, you don't need to.
No, not Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I was like, what do you mean they don't need to? So I was confused, you can tell them what shopping I do. So anyway, go ahead.
Could you identify yourself for me?
Yes, my name is Serena Beers, I'm the district manager for Boston Metro Market for Coles Department Stores.
And you're just looking to, how was that, do you have, were you here last year?
I was not here last year, but I was here in previous years, I've actually been here, I think, two or three times before.
All right, excellent, great. So gentlemen, yes, Paul?
I want to thank Coles for always being very efficient and expeditious in getting us this information to the point where they actually put it in basic layman's terms, the additional hours, the hours that they regularly open, the dates they're going to start, the last minute that you can actually go shopping. I always enjoy the fact that you guys do that and you do it better than anybody else, so thank you for that. And I, I'm in approval of this, so.
Okay, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, there's been no problems over the last six years. What I'm kind of amazed at is that, you know, I was in Coles recently and the manager, Lisa, as the shoppers are coming in, she knows the names of the shoppers.
Yeah, she's amazing.
And I thought that was phenomenal, it shows that she's in touch with the community and I just thought I'd pass that along, but...
No, she is, she's amazing, she would be here tonight, but she had another commitment today that she could not make it, so.
So I have no questions or objections.
Okay, Mike? No, sir. Okay, we're all set then?
All set, thank you.
Okay, so I can get a motion? No, public hearing. I'd like to open a public hearing right now. Is there anybody? Nobody? So I'd like a... Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close, but Mike, seconded by Nick, all those in favor? All right, aye. Now, can I get a motion on this article?
May I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the extension of the hours presented to us by Coles at 150 Lexington Street?
Second.
Temporary basis.
Motion in the seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Again, abstained, five zero zero, Betty. We're all set?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Good luck, get some sleep now.
Yes. Thanks, Dean. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, two twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, early this month, the board approved the insurance rates, health insurance rates for the upcoming calendar year. Tonight, we have Brian Curtin and John Zanizio here to tell us about an additional plan that the town is interested in offering, which has the potential for cost savings for both the town and employees going forward, so. John and Brian?
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Chairman, board members, as you know, and Paul mentioned, we already approved our traditional plans, the health insurance for 2020. The Health Insurance Advisory Committee has been meeting, coming up with some new ideas and cost-saving suggestions, and this is one of them that we felt strongly about for 2020. What this is, is we're asking the board to approve offering an additional health insurance program under Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare. It's another high deductible plan, it's basically, this plan would be suited for young and healthy individuals, active employees only, not retirees. It's called the Best Buy HSA HMO Plan. And I think probably most of you are familiar, but HSA is a Health Savings Account Plan, which the town has never offered before, we have a health, you know, a flex spending plan and so forth, and we have a, you know, plan where we have a high deductible option for the employees, as you know. This individual plan will save the town because the premiums are less, because the deductibles are higher. The deductible plan for an individual is $3,000 per member and $6,000 per family. The rate that you have before you, the individual plan rate is $189 for the employee and $441 for the employer. Total monthly premium is $630. Under a family plan, it's, individual rate is $504 a month, and the employer would pay $1,176 a month, the total premium $1,680. The differences in this plan basically is that, you know, as I mentioned, that the employees will pay a low premium per month as well as the town, but higher deductibles when utilizing these services. The town will fund the first half of the deductible in its health spending account, the $1,500 individual and $3,000 for family, and this will assist in paying for services. The employee can fund the rest of this through pre-tax dollars, which is important for the employees. If the money goes unused in a calendar year, the employees will be able to use this towards future medical needs. If they leave employment in Burlington, the remaining money in the health spending account is taken with them. So this is a really nice benefit for a young, healthy person, you're building up some money in the health savings account, if you're young and you're here for a long period of time or, you know, obviously going to have healthcare as a benefit for the rest of your life, you can take that money with you somewhere else if you leave employment here. And we're going to have a health fair this Wednesday, and we're going to have informational meetings for the first two weeks of November to roll this out to our active employees. So the town will also, when they reimburse this for the employees, we're not going to pay it all upfront, we're going to do it on a quarterly basis so that the town will not be hopefully stuck for any monies that we might upfront if somebody leaves employment. So we've worked out a plan that we think would work for the town, and we're asking in order to approve the offering of this plan on open enrollment, starting in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Brian. So I'm going to say real quick, I think this is a no-brainer for the, for the town people, not the town people, but the employees of the town. We'll start with Mike.
You know, one thing, you mentioned funding the...
Deductible.
Deductible to pre-tax dollars, how's, how's that work, Brian?
Basically, whatever the employee contributes to the health savings account will be pre-tax dollars, somewhat to like your flex spending, Mike?
Yeah.
So it's the same thing, there's no tax implications on that, the money that they contribute, so it can be done right through payroll deductions.
Okay, and that money will remain with them and then roll over into the following years, huh?
Yes.
Interesting, okay. I like that, wish I was a young, healthy person.
I know, it's not you and I that are going to be retiring soon, you know, so the younger, healthier people that, not healthy.
Jim?
Just a quick question, when you say it's geared toward the younger, healthier employees, do you have like a cutoff or how, how do you set that criteria?
No, there's no cutoff, it's an option available to everybody, to be honest, even somebody who's, could be retiring can, can join the plan, but if you, if you do the numbers, Jim, and you look at the deductible part of it, you know, if you're older and you get seriously ill and you hit your deductible, you know, you still might save a few dollars, but you may not save money if, you know, you use all the services all upfront, but we did the numbers and, you know, most individuals are going to save money on this because the premiums monthly are less.
So that's the only reason I asked is because when, earlier you said it's geared toward younger employees, I didn't, I didn't know if that included a cutoff, that's all.
No, there's no, there's no criteria as far as age goes, except for it's not offered to retired, active employees.
Paul?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Priest?
All set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All set, everyone's all set, okay. Paul, any additional comments?
Nope, it's, it's just another great product put together by the Health Insurance Committee, some of the employees have noted that they would like additional choices, this is an additional choice that is a little bit riskier from an employee's standpoint, but there's also the, the chance of a reward at the end, if you have a good year and, you know, that money is in your, your health savings account, you get to, to, to bring that with you if you were to leave or you'd have that available for, to fund next year, so. We're not anticipating that we're going to see a large migration at this point, but this type of product is something that, you know, is, is the next step on insurance for many, you know, organizations.
Great, awesome, thank you. So we need a motion, gentlemen?
I'll, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the addition of the Harvard Pilgrim Best Buy HSA HMO Policy.
Thank you.
Second.
Are you, Bob? Okay. Motion by Mike, seconded by Bob, all those in favor? Aye. Stained against, five zero zero, Betty. Gentlemen, thank you. Mr. Zanizio, great job tonight.
Just so Seattle looked pretty again.
And you did, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
There, Brian, thank you. Okay, now, here we go, two twenty-eight.
Public hearing, Mr. Chairman, Burlington Beer Works.
Yep.
Continued for...
Do we ever, do we ever close the public hearing on this?
No, it's continued.
It's continued, so this is continued right now, right? So, if you may, state your name and we'll go from there and we'll, just for the records.
My name is Paul Sporn, I'm counsel to Schlesser Brothers Brewing Company Incorporated.
Thank you, Paul.
Well, I'd like to just begin by thanking the board for the opportunity to address the board this evening, and I also wanted to thank you for the additional time that was afforded because we were supposed to meet several weeks ago. Despite the additional time that's been afforded and the extraordinary step of my client conducting an auction as, which is usually something that happens in a secured party sale in the event of a bankruptcy, the license that is presently owned by Schlesser Brothers has not been sold, as evidenced by the closing of Del Frisco's right here in, in the town of Burlington, and the shuttering of restaurants throughout the country and the Commonwealth. Chains like TGI Fridays are reorganizing, the closing, as I mentioned, of landmark restaurants here nearby such as Durkin Park and Doyle's, it's clear that the restaurant... It's clear that the restaurant industry is in flux. It's notable that just before the board, before I came to your attention, Buffalo Wild Wings was here. Just in terms of contrast, Buffalo Wild Wings is a, and I just looked them up on my phone, I've never been into Buffalo Wild Wings, I'm of course familiar with them. Buffalo Wild Wings has a, I was surprised to see this, has a market cap of $2.4 billion and has annual sales approaching $2 billion. And so they are in stark contrast to a restaurant chain such as my client's, which is a, for all intents and purposes, a family-owned business and, you know, with six locations and is struggling through the transitions that are affecting the restaurant industry. Back to Burlington, the crossroad space that was leased by my client remains untenanted despite the considerable efforts of Edens, the landlord. What is ongoing with the Burlington Mall, I believe, and my client believes, and our licensed broker believes, has affected the market. And just in terms of what's transpired here in the last two years, in terms of transfers, particularly transfers from, not from, you know, single locations, but of transfer of license from one location to another, the matter of that, those are matters of public record and are also, I think, speak to the difficulties within, in the restaurant industry. So it's my belief, as I'm here before you tonight, that a cancellation or revocation of my client's license serves no interest of any party. And I don't believe, and this is just my opinion, I don't believe that it's sound policy. I believe that the cancellation would effectively, in some senses, be punitive, and I certainly understand the board's frustration that this did not come to pass, and, but my client, again, is a small operator who employs approximately 200 people at this point, and the loss of several hundred thousand dollars of revenue, my client played, it's a matter of record here, my client played, I believe, paid $195,000 for that license. That loss, which would be a result of a cancellation or revocation, would be a serious detriment to his business and would potentially adversely affect others. It's also my opinion and belief that a cancellation or revocation will only result in one certainty, and that would be the likelihood of more costs, I think, we'd be faced with the prospect of an appeal, and that would just be a further drain, I believe, on, not only on my client, I believe it would be a drain on the town. It's obviously not up to my client or me to make any judgment as to what would be in the town's best interest, but I think it's, there's a substantial likelihood that this would result in more costs to the town. So I had the opportunity on Friday of last week to speak with Attorney Mead, I had, I think, a productive conversation with her, at least I hope it was a productive conversation. And what I would like to propose to the board right now is that this matter be continued again, so that my client be provided with more time to try to reach a resolution that is in everyone's interest, namely selling the license or finding a different location for the license for my client to operate in. This is supported by Edens, the landlord. The landlord has provided a letter of support of more time. That is, it has to be part of the record, and all I can tell you is that I appreciate the courtesy that this board has extended to me personally every time that I've been before the board, and my client, I can pledge to you, would be happy to work with the board and Attorney Mead under any framework that you think would be advisable, so that an efficient resolution that would be in the interest of all parties can be crafted.
Thank you. Paul?
Sir, what is your plan for the disposal of this license? This is going, what is your current plan? What have you done to date? I know you had an auction recently, but what's been done that's been going on for quite some time?
Well, the license has, first of all, been aggressively marketed by Atlantic Licensed Brokers, they're the largest licensed brokers in the state. So they have a, you know, a mailing list, if you will, of restaurant operators, so we are contacting the likes of people like Buffalo Wild Wings and other national chains to see if they have an interest in coming to Burlington. We've been trying to work cooperatively with the landlord on getting a tenant into a site that has historically been the site of a restaurant. The fact that Edens, which again is a multi, you know, multimillion-dollar commercial property landlord with shopping malls all over the country, the fact that they can't find a tenant for this space, I think speaks to the challenges of, you know, that everyone's faces. So I sort of liken this to having a piece of real estate which just has yet to sell. I think eventually it will sell, and again, the measure of taking this to auction where my client would face a substantial, the likelihood of a substantial loss, but was determined to try to do something to demonstrate that it has an interest in reaching a resolution. The fact that that did not produce any buyers, I think, has affected the process. So we would continue to work with Atlantic Licensed Brokers, we would continue to work with Edens, we would continue to explore other possibilities. I think until the, until there is a market correction, which is, I think, going on, again, not just locally, but nationwide with restaurants, I think there's a, there's a chance that this is going to take, you know, some more time, but-
We got it right now. So let me ask a question very quickly before I turn away, I have a couple of questions. What's the benefit to us by delaying this again and just not taking it back? Is there a benefit to us for this at all?
No.
No benefit, doesn't matter. Legally, we've done everything properly, we've done everything the right way so far, so by pushing this off for another six months, all we're really doing is just being really good neighbors, basically, is what we're doing, right? So we don't have to do anything at all. So the other question I have is, I'm trying to figure out, so if the Burlington Mall just got nine new liquor licenses, apply for nine new liquor licenses, and you can't sell one, I'm trying to understand all this in my head, trying to comprehend, that's one question. The second question is the tax rate that we're losing on this right now, how much do we lose for the past, how many years has it been? We'll argue about this. We'll argue about the years, but roughly, it's been what, five anyway?
No, it hasn't been five, no.
Four?
Several.
Several?
I can give you what I think is a ballpark, a ballpark estimate for your-
I don't need, me and you go through this every time. We go through this every single-
We haven't gone through this, but we can-
We're going to agree to disagree on this, because there's two different scenarios you can look at. And anyway, so the thing is, my mind is, I'm not totally against the fact of letting them go another six months, but I'm just trying to get your client, who has never been here except for one meeting at the zoning board of appeals I met him, the only time he's ever been here, he sends you in all the time, and I'm not happy with him at all, to be honest with you. I don't know why he can't come here and talk to us, and he sends you to do all the work. So I'm really close on the fence to saying, just give us back, move on. That's what I'm very, very close to, but I can understand, it's a lot of money for a small businessman, and I understand that side of it. So I'm going to turn it over to these guys and let them make a decision if I have to, or be a tiebreaker. Yes, Bob, go ahead.
As the other member of the Alcohol Subcommittee, I too have been frustrated by not only this particular situation, Paul, but the general outlook of what's going on with restaurants in town and in the region. I do have a feel, a feeling of remorse for the owner if, in fact, he does lose out on that $195,000. But I'm also not ready to, well, first of all, we're getting to the end of the year, and we're going to have to do a renewal again come December and into January, so I wouldn't even entertain six months, I would, you know, entertain just getting us through the end of the year for an extension, do the renewals, see what's going on from there before I make a decision to go any further than that.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I understood you correctly, Slazar Brothers tried to auction this license off?
Yes.
And you're telling me, or telling us, they received zero bids?
Zero bids. This was a publicly noticed auction with a massive mailing, statutory notice in the Boston Globe publication with the terms and conditions that included the terms that the board would require, namely that there be a property that the license could be transferred to, so we weren't trying to just find a buyer to, you know, to pocket the license, so to speak. We were, it was crafted to comply with the state and local requirements.
And, Mr. Chairman, just a quick moment, and just to echo kind of what Mr. Hogan said, we understand you are here to represent your client's best interest so that they don't lose money. Our clients are the town of Burlington, the residents. We're here to represent their best interest so that they don't lose money.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not opposed to extending this a little bit further. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think one of the first signs of an economic downturn is that people stop going out to And if what economists say is true, next couple of years probably aren't looking that pretty for any one of us. So whether we give you a month, two months, six months, if you haven't sold it by now, in my opinion, the odds of you selling it the next six months are extremely low. And I completely understand, like Chairman Morandi said and appreciate, that it's a small business and they have employees, that they're trying to keep staffed, and, you know, it's not easy for anybody, but like Slavantigas said, we have to keep the interests of the people of Burlington at the forefront. I guess I could be on board with taking this to the end of the year and then revisiting at that point, but, I mean, you know, to push it into 2020 with a renewal, you know, I mean, even if this has been going on for two years, it feels like two years too long. So, I mean, that's just my singular opinion, but, thanks, Chairman.
Thank you.
Chairman, may I suggest that you look to possibly continue the hearing to some time a little bit closer, December perhaps, and have the proponent in for an update for the board, and then you can make some decisions at that time.
Absolutely, yep. So how do you want to go about that? Do you want to just postpone this sold?
Can I respond to some of the comments, just because, just for practical matters?
You could, but you could be treading on some thin ice, too. You say the wrong thing, and we could turn around and say no. I'm just telling you what could happen right here.
Well, I'm, first of all, I'm, on behalf of my client, I'm very appreciative of the board's indulgence and consideration of any extension of time.
You're getting your contingents, is what I'm trying to tell you. You're getting your contingents, so-
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out-
And I'm just trying to tell you what could happen, because a bunch of us up here are very aggravated with what's going on with this issue right now. So what I'm trying to say is, like, maybe you should just let it go, but if you really want to speak, go ahead.
I yield back to Chairman Morandi.
Thank you very much. Betty, could you give me some dates?
Well, we're having a renewal on December 16. You could extend it to then, they could make sure they pay their renewal fee, we would have to get the fee with that fee at the door.
That's what I was, is the 16th or the 30th, the 16th of December?
That's when the Board of Selectmen here will be approving all the licenses.
Okay, so, but the, I think the deadline for submission is, I want to say, the 30th of November?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We could certainly, you know, present the, you know, present the renewal paperwork and go from there.
Your client is satisfied with paying the fee and et cetera.
Well, it-
All they would have to do are, we would just deny it tonight. If they're going to get a renewal past January 1st, they have to pay the fee and do the paperwork-
Okay.
-as they would every single year.
Well, I would certainly recommend that my client do that.
Okay, so I need a motion for the date Betty just gave.
December 16th?
I'll make that motion.
December 16th, I believe, is the due-
Okay, thank you. Yeah. I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. I move that we, the Burlington Board of Selectmen, allow to extend and continue the public hearing with respect to the consideration of cancellation of the all-alcohol liquor license of Slazar Brothers Brewing Company Incorporated doing business as Burlington Beer Works from October 28, 2019 at 7:00, to December 16, 2019 at 7:00 p.m., with any conditions as discussed.
Motion by Nick, second by-
Second.
Jimmy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against, abstained, five zero zero, Betty, continues till December 16. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We can ride along. Thank you, Paul.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, several meetings ago, the board voted to allow for the use of remote access for boards and committees within the town on a test basis. We got a sense of how the board members felt about this the last time when Nick made his presentation, but what we're looking for tonight is for the Board of Selectmen to determine whether or not the Board of Selectmen is going to authorize use of remote access on an ongoing basis, so-
For us.
For the Board of Selectmen. You've already made the vote to allow it, other boards and committees to make the decision on their own for a trial period, and now what we're looking for is for you guys to decide as to whether or not you're going to allow remote access at your meetings or not, so.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask, what was the date of the trial to end?
I believe it was September, sorry, September of next year.
September of next year, okay. Thank you, thank you.
So anybody want to speak on this? I know Nick's in favor.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, you know, that I wouldn't mind us approving this, knowing that it is the exception and not the rule, you know, just have it just in case, I mean, you know, we're all here just about-
So if this thing is, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm going to, so if this is approved tonight, and then we find that it's being abused by whoever, we can get rid of it just as fast as we put it in, right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Anybody? Jim?
No, I mean, Nick was, Nick's comment was in a form of a motion, I'll be more than happy to second it.
I would just say that as the Board of Selectmen, I think it's incumbent upon us, whether we have passed this or not, that we not-
Use it.
Use it, that we take the responsibility to show the other departments or the other committees that have boards that we take it seriously. We would hope during this trial period that everybody else still takes it seriously to be in the room.
Bob, as my father would say, that's what you signed up for. Michael?
I'll wait for the vote.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that we, the Burlington Board of Selectmen, agree to be able to hold remote access meetings following guidelines in accordance with the national law.
Motion by Nick, second by-
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, let me just add, for the trial period through September 2020.
I'll second next motion.
Second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstained against?
Aye.
Okay, so it's four zero one.
Four one zero.
Oh, four one zero, I'm sorry.
Four zero one.
Did I get it right yet?
Pause.
I'll figure it out. We all approved, Mike said no, how's that? Does that work?
Sorry. No, that's fine.
Okay, we all say with that one. Now, 2:30.
Just as an update to the board, we did receive some zoning articles for the upcoming town meeting in January, so we'll be forwarding, we've already got a couple of them, and Betty will be forwarding along everything that we receive. that we received. Um, the other articles, general bylaws and, and financial stuff, uh, is typically not due till forty-five days before. So, the zoning articles are due ninety days before town meeting and that deadline is upcoming this, tomorrow. So, we'll at least know what zoning articles are on the meeting for January and then, uh, whatever else comes in, we'll be asking the, the board to put together a warrant for that, um, as, as it becomes due. So, take a look at those emails you've received on, on the articles to date.
Thank you.
December sixteenth, we're forward for the, um, so we can get it printed.
Okay. Any questions on that, gentlemen?
None.
Okay. Uh, two thirty-one, Paul.
I think Betty had the twenty-twenty meeting scheduled for you guys to take a look at and, uh, just to sort of make sure that, um, doesn't conflict with any known, uh, vacations or anything, anything along those lines, so...
I saw it up on your email, did you?
It was separate, yeah.
We're all good on that. Betty, would you like the minutes done separately or together?
Um, the other one you don't have is the mandatory screen. Uh, you can all do, you could do them all together. We were all...
Okay. So, except for September twenty-third?
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter if we were in attendance or not, right?
Yes, and next, you can report that if you want, the board.
I don't want to.
Okay, do I have a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion, then we approve all the minutes in front of us.
Second by Bob, second by Chairman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Staying against? Okay. Subcommittee reports, let's start with, uh, Michael.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, not subcommittee necessarily, but, um, as we all know, Halloween is this Thursday. My concern is... Oh, you didn't know that? My concern is with the, uh, the weather. It, the, the weather is gonna be lousy, it's gonna be raining, and it's gonna be dark, and that's a terrible, that's a terrible combination, especially for somebody like me, uh, behind a wheel of a car. All, all, all I would like to do is just remind everyone out there, it's gonna be, it's gonna be nasty out there and for everybody to use, uh, good judgment and caution on Thursday night. Thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Absolutely. Uh, Bob?
No.
Want to bring up Halloween, too? Jim?
Um, in addition to this week being Halloween, um, we're trying to, uh, Joanne Foster and Paula, we're trying to nail down a date to interview for the fire chief. We have three internal candidates. Uh, we're just trying to work on a date that works for everybody and, uh, probably extending into a week or two into November, but we'll, we're trying, we're working on it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll, I'll echo...
Go ahead.
I'll echo Selectmen Runyon's, uh, comments. As, as a father of three young children, um, I don't know what I'm gonna do on Thursday, um, if it's downpouring out, because they all have their, their costumes and they're, they're pumped. Um, and their costumes are not rainproof, so it's gonna be an interesting day for sure, but, uh, please, everybody, be careful out there. Um, you know, if you have to stay in, stay in. Uh, then maybe, you know, get together as neighbors, you know, and do like an indoor house trick-or-treating thing or something, uh, but just be safe. Um, I'll also just add, not much has changed, but, uh, in terms of my subcommittees, but, uh, we're making great progress on the economic development trajectory. Thank you.
Okay. Chairman's report. Um, yeah, I got nothing left.
Oh, your son did that?
Just a little bit. Were you in the room when we talked about this?
No, I think he stepped out.
Did you step out?
I think he had.
I never minded. So, uh, report.
I just have a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on Saturday, I was, uh, here in town and, uh, I went down and got my flu shot at the townwide flu clinic. Um, what a great job is done by the Board of Health, um, in pulling off that event. In addition to providing the, um, the flu vaccine to, to the residents, it's also a little bit of a training for, you know, a mass, uh, type of event where we may have to, um, im- immunize, uh, residents quickly, so it's quite a, quite a system they have set up there. Um, amazing group of volunteers, a lot of familiar faces that I've seen around town and see at the senior center. I just wanted to say kudos, it's very efficient, um, and very, very well-run. Um, and again, thank you, it's, majority of the folks down there were volunteers, so I'd like to thank all the volunteers in the community for the effort that they put in. Um, uh, Mrs. Angelo was there, she asked me if I wanted the square needle. I didn't know what she meant by that, but I'm assuming it was something complimentary. Uh, and just a second thing, uh, I forwarded this to you fellows, uh, just, just to let the public at home know that, um, the town's, uh, Veterans Day Ceremony, uh, ten o'clock, November eleventh, over here at the Town Common, and keep a, keep a, a lookout on B-CAD if we're gonna have bad weather, because that's where the notification will be. It'll still be the same time and the same date, but they may have to move the ceremony from the common if we have bad weather, so...
To the gym, right?
Um, I'm not sure if they determine where...
It says, I think it said in the email to the gym, the Wooden Gym. I think it's gonna be in there.
Yes, Wooden Gym, correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just one more quick thing, I, I should have brought this up.